Testing, testing. Julie, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Yay!
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I think, let's see. Testing, testing.
I can hear you.
Okay.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, so that's good news.
Julie, hopefully you can hear us still if we turn on the cameras.
I can so far.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay.
All right, again, thank you for your patience, everyone. We're going to resume the meeting, and if we continue to have problems, we're going to try to record it via somebody's cellphone and get it posted that way. Unfortunately, technical difficulties are part and parcel of modern life, right? All right, so we're at the section for public comments, and the first name on my list is Tom Dolan.
Good evening. My name is Tom Dolan. I live here in Sunnyside. I just had a few notes to share with you tonight. Seems that we started 2025 with a few million-dollar deficit. Our former finance administrator said that with a couple years of tightening the belt, we could probably get out of this mess. Another little thing was I was pleased to hear that there was discussion with Mr. Bridges and, oh, I'm not supposed to say his name, with our interim city manager and council about reducing or eliminating the spending authority that was established by a previous administration. It seems to be of our later city managers kind of seem to have taken advantage of that, in my opinion. Okay. Let's see, what else did I have here? Some of the things about that was there was a a deficit on budgeted contracts and expenditures should be brought before and discussed and reviewed by council, and many of, there was a lot of things that weren't. This is not $50,000 per year, but per item or event. So, like, here's some examples. Paying management employees' contracts above the budget amount, purchasing new financial software without council approval, finance committees warned or wanted to discuss this and with the whole of the council, and I guess it didn't happen. We spent $20,000 apiece to hire three employees and
Thirty seconds, sir.
Really? That was quick, sorry. Well, there's a bunch of stuff here, I guess more than I can get done in 30 seconds. I talked to a lot of contractors, and we had attempted to get some of them to come back to Sunnyside, and they were not liking that idea much. And I think if we all get together and work on that, we can really get things going. You can't have fun at council while I go, you know?
Thank you, sir. Next name on my list is Carrie Miller.
My name is Carrie Miller. I work at Pioneer Elementary, and my husband has worked for 30 years at Harrison, and we both live on Owen Street, which is at the end of Skyline and Granding, kind of where they all meet. I'd like to talk tonight about the Fourth of July and the Fifth of July. I had two fires at my home from fireworks. Fire number one was about 11:00 PM on July 4th. Fire number two was around 4 o'clock on July 5th. Two separate fires, both caused by fireworks. We did not light off fireworks. Both of these incidences, we had no idea that our house was on fire. Neighbors each time have notified us. Our home had $43,000 in damage from fireworks. They had to demolition my roof. They had to repair the hole in my roof where it burnt through into my attic. We had our hole in the roof fixed. We had a new roof installed, and we had to remove all the insulation from the attic and replace it with new because of the soot in the fire that had went through my roof. They finished August 1st. It's still very difficult to talk about. This is the first time I've really talked about this. I read through the reports from the fire department and read the 911 transcript of the second fire where someone had called in a 911 call, and in that call, they said, "It's Mrs. Miller's house. It's Mrs. Miller's house." I am only now just able to sleep unless I hear fireworks. I've spent the last three weeks. There's a firework that goes off, which they still are. I have to go out and check my roof. If I go outside as I did
Thirty seconds.
Wednesday, I smelled smoke and I had to walk around my house to make sure my house was not on fire. I'm not sure when that's going to stop, and I am just here to give you, my city council, a person and a face to the repercussions of the Fourth of July and feeling like I had lived through a war zone. The trauma that I have from this will linger with me for what I'm assuming will be a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie.
Next name on my list is Janet Hicks.
Janet Hicks, Sunnyside. First, I would like to thank the police department and the foundation for this national night out. It was awesome to have our neighbors and be in our neighborhoods again. Don't want to do such so many streets next time. I was panicking, but hey, it was great. Anyway, I am coming up here to complain about some city property. We are all told to keep our houses and our yards clean and everything else. Well, our city property is not being maintained. I have talked to both, when we had the two code enforcements, I have talked to previous, whatever you want to call them, economic directors, and I would like to see something done. I've reported it online. It's, you know, it's nasty. Just coming up and spraying it ain't going to do it. I have pictures. So, if anybody wants them, I'm... And then I also have pictures at the corner of Columbia and Terry, or bushes, or flowers, or trees, whatever you want to call them, at the stop sign. You cannot see around them when you're trying to turn left. The stop sign either, well, the stop sign needs to be moved up some, and the trees need to be cut or something. It's just, you know, not looking good. So, thank you. And if possible, my remaining minutes I would like to give to Monica in case she has some really good stuff.
It's a nice thought, but I'm not sure that
Doesn't really carry any weight.
Monica's saying she doesn't need it, so. All right, and Monica, you are next on my list, so.
But thank you for considering it. Monica Neimeyer, Sunnyside. And I might stumble a little bit. I'm going to do my best to redact the names, Dean. On July 28th in a council meeting, an individual that is in charge of two nonprofits stated that two council members here were bullies for asking questions. That individual then referred to the June 23rd meeting, that another council member, and accused that individual of violating an RCW. That is RCW 4256250, which is employment licensing. The individual then posted a video on Facebook, which was titled "The PSA", and in that video quoted another council member about the RCW. And however, that council member stated that the attorney was looking into it. The RCW was not stating that the RCW was utilized, put in place, and therefore the RCW was violated. It simply stated it was being looked into. The level that this subject had escalated to has actually, it's on you, council. It shouldn't have gotten this far. The RCW should have immediately been reviewed and discussed during the council meeting. A discussion about RCW itself would have helped the council and the public to be better aware of what is going on, and maybe could have helped others to know that there is protection for individuals and their dependence of domestic violence. In order for this discussion to have caused all of this tension. In the RCW, under Section A, it states what must be completed, what the document must contain, and that it must be a sworn statement signed under the penalty of perjury and used to be the holder of that record. The RCW does not allow for enforcement by the act of statement or by implying. The process should be followed as it is law and respect for all those others that have used it in the past and will use it in the future. The process should be followed as it is law and respect for all those others that have used it in the past and will use it in the future. So what is this created? It's a situation where this individual and the two nonprofits she represents have accused council members of being bullies and accusing another council member of breaking the RCW, breaking the law. I believe as it currently stands, it, you don't know if an RCW is in place and I hope council today talks to their council to get this straightened out. I myself being confused and searching for answers, I actually called the state auditor. They pointed out that the information that was wanting to be removed could be found in open web. And yes, they were correct. I did find it. The RCW also states in Section 1D that the employee deduction is a detail that is not to be shared with the others. Want more? Okay, thank you, Dean. Maybe I could have read that wrong? Please clarify. If the RCW has not been put in force but is being utilized, then council, you again have placed yourself in a situation that could be, could have been solved discussing the knowledge and the RCW to utilize, who the criteria is not met. So how was that then? So council, please provide clarification on this and please start addressing items that escalate, causing tensions and confusion to our community. And most of all, ensuring protections are put in place for those that need it. Thank you so much.
Next name on my list is Sharon Dolan.
Good evening. Sharon Dolan, resident, Sunnyside. This will be a little redundant for some folks here, but I've been being asked a lot of questions lately about the procedures of council and the city. Sunnyside has a council mayor form of government. Residents elect council. Council votes for mayor. Council hires and directs city manager. City manager hires and directs staff in a professional manner. All are public servants paid by our tax dollars. Some on council do not respect constituents that ask questions. This was heard on hot mic issue at last council meeting by those watching online. When a community receives grant awards, many residents are not aware these funds must be used for specific projects. To help reduce confusion on city finances, when making public announcements about awarded funds, maybe these announcements should be approved by council and include specifics on where funds must be spent. Does the city award grants? What is the application process? Are applications open to public? Who chooses recipients? Is there a committee that reviews grant awards to avoid gifting of public funds? At council meeting in May, I asked why public works position hadn't been posted. The position had been open for some months. This was not an attack on anyone. I spoke with interim director afterwards and asked him the question again. He said they needed to update the job description. The current job description states that the applicant must pass a state test and have an engineering degree. This job is a very important job in our city and the job is still not posted. When filled, this would save the city many dollars that are now being spent on outside engineering companies. A good public works director would help encourage building in the city. Many are asking for transparency. As stewards of our tax dollars, it is council's duty to ask questions. To streamline the process, they have been asked to submit questions ahead of time. Questions are submitted. Then at public meetings, we keep repeatedly hearing. I will get back to you on that. This takes away my right to know and also takes away council's responsibility to make timely and informed decisions.
30 seconds, ma'am.
In closing, I am hopeful that council, city manager, leadership team, and staff as public servants paid by our tax dollars will work together, moving our community forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next name on my list, excuse me if I get it wrong, David Cortinas.
I just want to second the prayer. She had it all the points right. David Cortinas, Tri-Cities investigator reporter. As you all know, I've been investigating the city council for a good six, seven weeks now. I just got back from doing Auburn and Bellevue city councils. I've been doing Pasco and and county commissioners for 30 years. It's sad for me to say that this is one of the most corrupt city councils, Mr. Mayor, under your belt that I have ever come across in 30 years. It's really sad that Mike Gonzalez had to file a tort claim lawsuit last Wednesday that you were served with and you were kept very quiet about it. The city community doesn't know it, but that's been filed. All of you got to clean. There was zero dollars on it because he's not interested in money. He's interested in returning to work. And because of one councilwoman continues to attack personally, that I have found in my investigation from your community, you have requested everything that I'm writing about in English. So our website's down today. It's going to come back on where you can see everything that I'm writing about in English. So we're going by the rule. Only because your citizens in your community has requested, but thirdly, it's not been thrown 100% Hispanic. But we're going English and Spanish. It was really sad. It really is. It's really sad that I have two Latinos of my race that continue to support this type of relationship that they continue to support happening in that lawsuit, where one councilwoman was accused of stealing towels and had to go pay the city council. He knows who he is. It's really sad and I'm ashamed that this is happening. That we cannot come to those adults to be able to end this investigation. 90 days you haven't come up with anything to file something against Mr. Gonzalez. It's really sad that you can't come up with something in 90 days. I think it's time that someone on his council makes a motion to drop the investigation because you've got nothing on him. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership and for your time in allowing the investigation to go on in those 90 days, that it's time to end it. Because you've got nothing on him. And we keep trying to find something on him. The investigation has been slipped. The nation will be coming out of that investigation. I don't know how many of you guys know you guys are going to spend $3,000 going to Mr. Gonzalez's phone. I don't know how many of you guys are going to find him in this month. And you try to find a way of not paying the severance pay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next on the list is Britton Moore.
Good evening, council. Britton Moore, Sunnyside, Washington. I want to just take a minute to thank Janet Aguirre. She came and did a quick presentation at the last study session on August 4th. If anyone out there who's listening would like to listen to it, she starts at 47 minutes. So that was the study session on August 4th. And she said some, shed some light on some things that needed to be rectified and corrected with the fee schedule. So thank you, Janet. Also want to mention that I did not receive a bill for the opening pool day for Bob's Drive-In. Also, whoever was in charge of that, someone had called in and wanted to pay for the second session. So sadly, they should have maybe had that person pay for the second day and the city would have had a bigger donation. Just in case that happens again in the future. So if you can send me a bill for that first session, that'd be great. Also, TJ's Refrigeration would like to pay for the final day. So if, I don't know if the pool's open yet. Is it open again yet? Quite yet? Yes, great. So that's good news. So we can promote that. TJ's would like to pay for the full day of swimming for kids under 12. On a, on a final thought, there was a regular meeting on August 28th. No one was adjourned. The microphones were left on. There were some things said. I'm not going to repeat what those are. They were asked to be removed. You can still get a, a record of that if you'd like. I want to remind council that the people in this room and the people listening care about this city. They spend their extra time being at meetings at night, volunteering for parades, doing functions, national night out, they spend their money, donations for the city. Being called names and referred to in the way that this room was referred to that night is unacceptable. Makes me very sad that something like that was done. I just hope that maybe you go back and work on the code of conduct of council, maybe one more time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counsel, Counselor Hancock has asked if she could read a letter into the record from a citizen. Is there any objection?
Could we have maybe the clerk read that into this as opposed to the council member?
I don't know. What does council think? Is there other objections to?
Is it regarding this?
Yes, exactly. That's what I'm going to read because he couldn't be here.
It's okay.
It's okay with me. She read.
Other objections?
I, I object.
Okay, Counselor Hart has objected. Is there other objections? Okay, it's unusual, but with councils, if there's no objections, Counselor Hart's objection is noted. The majority of council says it's okay. So Counselor Hancock, I will allow you to read that.
It might be newly unusual, but when I was on council prior to this term, that was actually kind of a common thing. Dear Counselor Hancock, this is Doug Garrison. He lives in Sunnyside. I love the Fourth of July and fireworks and everything that goes with it. This year seems particularly egregious in terms of unauthorized and unnecessary fireworks of unusual power. I have been plagued with fireworks since the 20th of June. These devices are going up in the air 200 feet or more and detonating with tremendous force. They are so powerful, they are rattling windows in my entire house. My family is not used to these devices and it is scaring them badly. I also do not understand why they are doing this at 1:00 AM, 1:30 AM, 2:00 AM, 2:30 AM. In my area, they seem to be coming from one location. And just to note, Mr. Garrison lives very close to Mrs. Miller that spoke earlier. In my area, they seem to be coming from one location. They are still igniting fireworks as late as August 9th, 2025. This is nearly 50 days that this has been going on. I cannot believe that law enforcement cannot simply knock on the door and tell them to stop this and/or make an arrest for disorderly conduct. We should instruct the municipal court prosecutor to prosecute the arrestees and insist on jail time. This is in addition to the virtually nightly gunshots, sometimes 30 and 40, 50 gunshots all late at night. I find it very hard to believe that the law enforcement folks do not know where this is coming from. We seem to have a city council and city officials with some notable exceptions that are completely oblivious to these problems or have a case of willful blindness. These things, in addition to others, are contributing to the decline of the quality of life in Sunnyside, which has sadly a terrible reputation throughout our entire valley. Doug Garrison.
Thank you, counselor. And just a quick comment on the fireworks. We approved last year a different code for fireworks, which turned out to be an absolute, well, I suppose the best way for it would be an absolute disaster. Citizens in the community did not like it at all. Council responded. But it turns out under state law that we have to wait a year before we can enforce that new ordinance that we passed, which means this year we had to tolerate it one more time. The ordinance is much tighter next year. I know I, at one time, lived very close to where Mrs. Miller now lives and I remember one of the houses there catching on fire. The Arbovitas caught on fire, burned the car port off. And that was just before council banned them for almost 30 years. And we never quite all the way got rid of the fireworks. This was an attempt to try to give them a window of opportunity. The new ordinance is going to allow for fireworks on the Fourth of July only for a certain number of hours. I don't know what is going to be legal as far as enforcement goes. I'm not sure what the state is going to allow. In some cases, our hands are tied, our police officers' hands are tied. But we can certainly work to increase enforcement on that. It is correct fireworks are going off continuously. I still live in that district. It still bothers me. I listen carefully. If it's a gunshot or a firework, I can tell the difference. There appears to be a shooting range somewhere just outside of city limits and we can, we can hear that pretty well late at night, but not a public shooting range. I think somebody's got something at their house, but they'll be firing off clips at 2:00 AM.
I do believe that's one schooner out that direction.
It could easily be, counselor. I can hear it very clearly at my house. I know that. It's at 2:00 AM or any other time. So we are aware of it and we have tried to take some steps this year. We knew it was going to be a struggle. But we're hoping that we have improved it for next year. And you know, if it needs to be improved more, then council will continue to work on it. So thank you, everyone, for your comments. I know sometimes it feels like they fall on deaf ears, but I assure you, we hear them. We try to respond to them. We try to improve things. So again, thank you for being here. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following. Minutes of the April 28, 2025 regular meeting, minutes of the May 5, 2025 study session, payroll check register, approved payroll check register transaction numbers 9623 through 10435 and wire transfers as listed for $751,616.98 for the period ending 8/6/2025. Check registers, approved check register transaction numbers 10314 through 10573 and wire transfers as listed for $556,885.10 for the period ending on August 6, 2025. Council members, are there any item that you would like to remove for discussion?
I would like
Counselor Hancock.
Remove 10327. Oh, no. Yeah, 10327, HLA Engineering and Land Surveying.
Okay. Any other council members? Ms. Ripley.
10314. That's the
Okay. Counselor Hancock.
When, when council sees something come across their plate that is $342,000 and it contains many, many invoice numbers, I would just like to ask staff that they don't just come across as invoice numbers, that we get a more detailed on this. And I know Mr. Mahal worked on that today. But I just think without council having to spend a day emailing and getting back to everybody and trying to figure out, and even so, I, I still, you know, that's a, how do I, as a council member, when I have to speak to my constituents, how do I tell them what a bill for $342,000 is if all I've got is invoice numbers? And, and that's, that's a big chunk, especially when we're going through these times that we've gone through as council and been behind on, on paying, you know, been behind on budget, that we've had a budget deficit. So I just, I just want staff to be conscious that we have to, when we ask for stuff, we're, we're not asking for the reason of a gotcha or anything else. We're asking because we have to justify what we're doing up here and that's part of our job. So I just wanted to point that out and I'm sure that HLA is not billing us incorrectly or anything else, but I just, for council's information, those kind of things need to be brought to council in a better form.
Okay, Ms. Cott, is there a way that council members or even citizens can dive into a line item on a, on an expense account or even in the, in the budget? Is there a way to change the upcoming budget so that people can look a little more closely at those?
So in the upcoming budget, there will have places where we can itemize line items so that, say, for example, you have an account number and there's four different things that make up that account number. We can identify those. We can also add comments to those and we can also add attachments to those. As far as the invoices for the item that Councilmember Hancock is asking about, at that point in time, as we're going through the budget, we wouldn't necessarily know exactly what invoices were going to be upcoming for that year. We just know a basic dollar amount that we've historically needed for that line item. I believe Mr. Mahia has been working really diligently on getting all of the invoices and for HLA, coordinating with their staff to make sure that we're able to provide all of the information that Councilmember Hancock asked for.
Okay. And Counselor Hancock, did you get the information that you needed for that?
I, late this afternoon. Um, I, I, late this afternoon, it came out. I didn't have time to review it. I'm not gonna hold up the payment to HLA, but I, I just, you know, if we're supposed to ask before council meetings, if we can't get that information before council meetings and, and, um, our citizens can't get that information before council meetings, then we need to be, especially something as large as three hundred and forty-two thousand, we need to be able to have, um, the citizens know that we are looking at this and we are paying attention to what's coming across our desk.
Thank you, Counselor Hancock, and that was a good observation. I did, I also felt that the annotation on there was a little bit vague on a couple of those items. And so, yeah, to be able to know exactly what we were paying for. So hopefully, when I get to my computer, Mr. Mejia, I'll be able to look at that and tear into that as well. So.
Yes, and then I, I am also on that. Uh, I do have Ms., uh, Ringer. Uh, I contacted her, contacted her earlier, and she is getting a better atomized, um, portion of that questions that you had, that of all the invoices that you've asked for. Um, I'm hoping to get it by tomorrow, Wednesday the latest, and then I will email the council members with all that information to you. Um, today, I, I dug through my computer. I had Ms. Gonzalez dig through her file paperwork. And we both looked at both our binders for that, for the information that we found. I apologize for being so late. Um, we were just looking and trying to find as much information as we can. So, um, we've had very atomized for you guys. Um, I will make sure that next time when council, uh, has a question, that I get it back to you as soon as I can.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Counselor Hancock, you satisfied? All right. Counselor Ripley, item one, oh, three, one, four?
Yeah, this is, uh, on the claims for US Bank card. And, um, I've talked to Ms. Kosky about it, and she needed to get ahold of the interim city manager, I don't know if she'd ever got ahold of him, about making sure that each one of us council members got a readout of what those statements were on for the ten thousand dollars. And, uh, she said that, she sends me an Excel spreadsheet, but, uh, I think each council member needs to see this. We're in charge of, uh, you know, the budget and making sure that it's all paid right and that each charge is paid. And, uh, that's just where I'm coming from.
Mr. Bridges, you want to comment on that?
Yeah. Um, Ms. Ripley, did, did you get the information you received in that Excel spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. So then, uh, the, the only remaining point is that that should go out to, to the full council, not just to you. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the typical action on that one is if a council member asks the question, then the answer, the, the question goes to the city manager. The city manager goes, goes to the appropriate department head, but the answer goes out to all council members. And so if there's a budget question or, or something else, a contract question, something like that, the answer will go out to all of us, so we all know the same thing. So that has been typical practice, and, yeah, we'd probably like to continue to see that happen that way. All right. Does that satisfy your question, Ms. Ripley?
Yes.
All right. If there's no other questions, what is the desire of council on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Hancock to approve the consent agenda. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none. Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes. Active agenda. Item A, donation of surplus thermal tops and bottoms. Approve a resolution declaring the thermal tops and bottoms as surplus and authorizing their donation to Camp Hope. Mr. City Manager, I'm hoping that you're going to define for the, for the public what thermal tops and bottoms are and what we're talking about here.
Okay, well, I'll actually defer that to Chief Lehman, uh, since this is his item. Chief?
Okay, so when we transition to the new commissary, uh, the new commissary provides, uh, food and that type of stuff for the, um, residents of the jail, they did not purchase our long underwear, thermal underwear. That was what we had left. And the value what we paid for, it's four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We have no way to sell it to the, uh, residents, and we have nothing to use it for. So our, um, best guess we could come up with was to donate it to Camp Hope, who provides most of our, uh, services for homeless outreach in Sunnyside. So that was our, uh, solution. Um, but anything that we, uh, determine surplus has to come before council, no matter the dollar amount. So here I am.
Very good. Council, questions for the chief?
No, I think that's a perfectly good thing to do with it. So that's, I second that.
I had over three questions, but you just answered them all.
Other questions or comments? Well, I agree with my colleagues, chief. I think that, um, you know, as, as, yeah, it's really hot out there today, but we're looking at winter coming up here shortly, and, you know, there's gonna be people out there in need. And if we can, uh, we can help in some way, that would be fantastic. So. All right, if there's no other comments or questions, what's the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Okay.
There's an echo down there.
Yeah, we're gonna call it Counselor Hancock. Who's gonna second?
I'll second it.
All right, Counselor Ripley seconds. All right, motion by Counselor Hancock, second by Counselor Ripley to approve a resolution declaring the thermal tops and bottoms as surplus and authorizing their donation to Camp Hope. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none. Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto? Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
I two vote yes. Motion passes. I think it was a great move, chief. Item B, leasing property at Ninth and Lincoln from Sunnyside School District. Approve a resolution to allow the city manager to sign the lease agreement for two thousand four hundred dollars per year. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Uh, this item has come before the council, uh, a couple of times in the last couple of months. Uh, this is for the, uh, placement of the new lift station equipment, uh, along Lincoln Avenue. Uh, I know Mr. Mejia, uh, has been working on it diligently. Um, I think at the last, uh, meeting we had where it was presented, we were lacking the, um, property description, legal description of the property to be leased, and we wanted to make sure that was pinned down. Uh, the picture that was provided was an old, uh, aerial photo that doesn't adequately, didn't adequately represent the location. It's always best if you're going to enter a, to at least agreement like this, to make sure that we, uh, both parties are aware of exactly where it's at. So I will, uh, turn this over to, uh, Mr. Mejia and potentially, uh, Ms. Ray for discussion.
Mr. Mejia.
Yes, so back in twenty sixteen, uh, was when we were purchasing a piece of property right there at the Lincoln and Ninth. Uh, that's where our sewer, uh, sewer is at. It's actually underneath the road. So we have to use the building to go underneath it. Um, right now, I have given you got, uh, given you guys, uh, the cost estimate of what the cost is gonna be for that whole project. Um, I've also attached, um, Exhibit A of the lease, uh, property also on there. So you guys can have for that. And, uh, staff is asking that we be able to have, uh, the city interim managers sign this lease agreement with the school district for twenty-four hundred, uh, a year, uh, for the next ten years.
Questions or comments for Mr. Mejia or the city manager? Go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
In, in the lease agreement, it does say Exhibit A, but none of the documents are labeled as Exhibit A. So just.
Okay, I will make sure next time it's Exhibit A, or the exhibit it's, it's supposed to be named.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's just not.
I can do that.
Further questions?
No, thank you for doing that.
Yes.
I have a question.
Ms. Frosto?
Could, could you clarify the, just the chart that's, um, a part of the, the documents, um, listing the construction costs with a projection cost of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars?
Any, any particular item?
HLA. Am I on the?
Yeah, you're on.
I'm on the right document. Okay.
Yeah, they attached.
So anything in particular you're looking at or that I can clarify?
If you can just walk us through it.
Okay, so basically, in the beginning, I mean, obviously, there's minor changes that we have on there, just in case, you know, something does come up. Uh, there is mobilization, bringing all the equipment over. That's what the cost is gonna be. Um, project temporary traffic control, obviously, we'll have traffic control on the streets because of equipment, and, um, that'll be around the area. Uh, so we'll have flaggers out there to make sure that all our citizens are safe and be able to keep on driving on those roads. Uh, clearing and grubbing, obviously, that's landscape area, you know, taking out the lawn, the dirt that'll be removed. Uh, we will have some de-watering out there. Obviously, that's due to, uh, high table water that is, uh, there. Uh, so we'll have to do some de-watering to get the groundwater out and clear up. Uh.
You have a backup.
Oh, definitely get back to you too.
Go ahead, Ms. Ray.
A backup for you. Uh, and so, uh, thank you, Councilwoman Frosto. Um, this chart is a construction estimate. So as the project progresses, this is the anticipated cost for the overall lift station. And so all of these items are called bid items, and based on our design, this is what we'd anticipate for the total cost. Now, it's projected to be eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So the plan is, uh, twofold. Um, so currently, the design of the lift station is under a Department of Ecology grant. Department of Ecology has notified us that we will not receive construction funding until twenty twenty-seven because of all of their budget shortfalls that they have. So we are trying to find additional funding. Um, and that funding, the option at the moment is a seed application. The seed application is being worked on, and we projected that would be presenting that to council, um, likely in the next two council meetings, for submission to Yakima County Development Association, YCDA, uh, for, uh, their consideration. And so seed money, uh, seed money would completely cover the construction cost. So, uh, why this was included, uh, we had understood that there were some questions from council, uh, about fencing and some site improvements on site to actually site that lift station. And so this cost estimate was provided in this packet, uh, to illustrate that all of the costs associated with the lift station going on the school district property is covered, and it is to be included within the anticipated funding program. So no anticipated city costs, um, in, in addition to any match requirements, um, you know, funding programs or whatever we're able to find to completely fund the, the project. So what Hector was doing was reading off each, um, bid item. These are all standard, um, flash dot bid items. Um, the wording might seem a little strange, but it, it directly comes from the standard specifications, and so that's why it's worded the way it is. But certainly, um, happy to answer any specific questions on any of these. Um, so as you work across, you have a unit, um, that's how a quantity is measured. You have a unit cost, which is based on current bid results, um, that we've had for the last two years. The overall quantity is, um, say, like forty lineal feet. That's how much lineal footage is anticipated to be, um, in the ground and the overall cost. So, uh, this is not part of the lease agreement. It was just provided for, um, council services.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Other questions?
Just a quick one.
Sorry.
Um, so these are the preliminary numbers. Will the numbers, because of the market, change a little bit, shift a little bit in the, in the process?
Yep, absolutely. This is a game of strategy, and it's kind of the fun part of our job, is that we try to prioritize these projects and put them out to advertisement, meaning solicit, um, bids from contractors, uh, when it's gonna be the most competitive. So, um, we will, uh, with, with funding from the seed program, uh, we would find out about that in October. That's when the, uh, YCDA board meeting is. And if successful, we would try to get this out, uh, this winter. So, um, this is a kind of a fun, uh, exercise for us, where we try to get, you know, that, that real competitive bid. We don't wanna really bid a project during midsummer when every contractor already has more work than what they know what to do with. So, um, it, it, that, that's a strategy. So, uh, yes, the numbers will change, um, and it would be based on a contractor bid.
And it could go up and it could.
That is also the, the nature of the game. Um, so a couple of things going on in the middle of this cost estimate. So, uh, we typically add contingency. So we got that ten percent down there. Uh, that's anticipated to cover, um, increases. You know, there are, um, every year, we have an item that, uh, we can't control. Like, they don't longer make a paint component in China, and so we see higher than normal bids. Uh, feel really pretty confident about what you see here, and this will be, uh, will go, uh, two, uh, two seed, to solicit that funding.
But that is not part of what's on our agenda tonight.
It is not, no.
It is just the lease.
Our next, the next point was gonna be, this is all interesting information, but, um, what we're trying to decide on tonight is the lease, and that lease is being offered to us by the school district. We've got an agreement with the school district for twenty-four hundred dollars a year. That lease is good for ten years, and so after ten years, we'll have to renew that lease. And with our history of the school district, I'm going to say that they will probably continue to be extremely cooperative. The district has been very good to the city over the years. So. Further questions? Ms. Vasquez?
Not a question, but I did notice that the lease agreement was updated. The dates are correct this time. And I see the years also included. However, in the front page, under the summary, I do see September first, and maybe if we just add the years, uh, onto the first page as well, would be good, just for better clarification. Thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none. What's the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, got motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Hancock to approve a resolution to allow the city manager to sign the lease agreement for two thousand four hundred dollars per year. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none. Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
And I two vote yes. Motion passes. Item C, development of climate element. Approve a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute the development of climate element, task order number two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, two. Mr. City Manager?
And I think I will turn this over to Ms. Ray from HLA for, for input.
Ms. Ray.
Mayor, council, interim city manager, public, deputy public works director. Thank you again. Uh, so what you have before you is an addendum to our task order. And most of, I think everyone is familiar, uh, the city is required to do a climate change element. Um, and it is a requirement, state requirement, uh, and fortunately is a funded mandate, uh, for, for every single city in Washington State. And so the Department of Commerce has given, um, depending on your city size, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a hundred percent grant. Uh, that funding was to come out over, uh, two separate grant programs, so year one and year two. Uh, so the city, uh, submitted the application to get that grant funding coming in. Um, the city did everything in its power. Uh, Commerce took about six months to get those agreements back to you and, and every other city in Washington State. So across the board, uh, not just Sunnyside, but they are amending, um, the year one and new, year two agreements for Department of Commerce. So all that does is, it, well, requires us to do a lot of work with, uh, contracting, but it pushes the deliverables that were supposed to be in year one to now the new modified year one to meet, um, Commerce's, uh, new deadlines. And so we required us to amend our agreement to make the, the times copensatic. Uh, so the other item, um, to bring up in front of council is that we still need to completely seed out the community economic development board. And so, um, that is forcing a little delay on us to be able to move forward with the public engagement. Please?
Question, just to clarify, is it a community economic board or is it the climate?
It is a climate, climate change, uh, element board. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. It was on the tip of my tongue. Uh, and so we do need to completely seed that board in order to continue to move forward with this project. So absolutely happy to answer any questions, council may have.
And before questions, just a, a quick note that the rules committee met this afternoon, and we've talked about that board, and I think we may be able to proceed. We, we do have a quorum. Um, we, we haven't had a lot of applications, but I think we do have a quorum seated, and we have a council member. Um, as you mentioned, we could appoint a staff member to be on there too, so we could, we could possibly do that. We could talk to interim city manager about getting that done. So, council, questions for Ms. Ray? Ms. Frosto?
Yes. Um, Stephanie, um, do we know what specific components the climate element will include? Or how have we been engaging community already to be able to develop this plan?
Great question, and thank you for your question. So the elements of the climate change element are, uh, prescribed. They come to us from Department of Commerce. We have a kind of a workbook, lack of a better word, where we have to go through and meet every single one of those requirements. Now, public engagement can't happen until the committee approves a public engagement plan. So we really need to get that, that board seated to really begin that public outreach.
Stephanie, are those workbooks available for council members?
Uh, they are, yeah. Everything is available online. Uh, likewise, um, we have already completed a draft public engagement plan that we can send to you too.
I'd really appreciate that. I'd really appreciate that.
I think we'd all like to see that, yeah.
Yes, please. I think I'm serving on that particular.
You are.
Um, board. So I'd like, certainly like to have a copy of that.
Yeah. Uh, and so once the board is completely seated, um, Joseph Calhoun in our office, uh, they'll be having, uh, regular meetings with, with the actual seated committee, uh, to move forward with that action plan. So this will not be the first time we hear about this.
All right. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
You, you keep saying completed, uh, seated, right? Um, with us having quorum, can they meet? And how soon can they meet? Or do you need us to completely seed all the?
Are, uh, uh, great question again. Uh, so previous community economic development director, when he set up this ordinance, it was to be a completed, a completed seated board. So every, every vacancy needs to be filled. Then, uh, you can move forward if you have a quorum, you know, you can continue to meet. So you, you do need all the vacancies filled is my understanding. Um, it's, uh, rather unique compared to other cities. They have not done that, but, um, that was how Sunnyside was set up.
Remember that.
So, and we have two positions, two positions open and one of them can be a staff member.
So that means we'd have one left.
We would have one left, yep.
You can also have. Applications for those mayor.
Pardon me?
We have applications.
We have one application.
And that's what we need is, is one.
We need to fill one space, yes.
Good, good.
But the applicant does not live in Sunnyside and we were kind of hoping to find somebody who lived in Sunnyside.
Well, it isn't a requirement from what I understood when we filled the seat before I asked that.
No, it was not, it is not a requirement, but we were hoping to find somebody who lived in or near Sunnyside. And so that's why we haven't moved.
Oh, well, yeah. Well, I was just wondering if they have knowledge about that kind of stuff. Then I don't think, you know, to move forward.
Well, the, the information is, is, um, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. The, the information is, as, uh, Stephanie has mentioned, is on, online. So anybody who wants to take a look at it and see what's supposed to be happening with that climate element, uh, can do that. So they have a little bit more, more knowledge, but they're, um, certainly as soon as we're able to have a full, um, board, then we can, can start really doing the, getting ready for the public engagement part, setting out what our goals are. But, uh, but the information is online, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm sure it is.
Correct.
So anybody who's interested.
One thing the state does well is get information out online and so that's, Mr. Frosto.
I have one final question. Um, from the eighty-two thousand, um, how much of these monies will be going to H L A for technical assistance?
Um, so that's a great question. I believe the eighty-two thousand is for, um, addendum number one. So our scope of services is one, item one, two, in our task order, um, three, four, five, six, seven. So, uh, our fee for services are breaking out by project. And I believe when you total those, it probably is the eighty-two thousand. Now, with that said, it does leave, um, the, your total current amount is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we are going for, just to cover our services, produce a plan. The city will retain, um, approximately, I think it's around fifty thousand dollars that you can use for further implementation. So that is, um, for, for the city to develop a, uh, say if, um, it becomes an action item to do, um, air, air quality monitoring throughout the city, then the city could use that money to put in those air quali- quality monitoring devices. So H L A services not the entire hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Ms. Hancock?
Uh, Stephanie, do you know, um, this is coming through the state of Washington? Do you know the funding source for that? How long we anticipate that's going to be there? Can it be taken away?
Yes, that was a worry last year. And that was part of the reason why these contracts were so slow in rolling out. So, uh, the requirement came through, uh, the Climate, um, Commitment Act Fund. And so it, it is just specific to Washington State. And through the previous governor's order, um, the actual requirement rolled down to the Department of Commerce to administer, um, that requirement from the previous governor. But with it came the funding. And so when, um, kind of the election year, no one really knew what was going to happen. Um, likewise, um, the current president, again, no one really knew if he was going to roll back, um, requirements upon the cities. So, uh, that, that was a concern. Um, that, that money though has been secured and it was secured in the last, uh, governor's budget. So no, you're not going to be, um, hanging out there and having to pay this back.
Okay, further questions?
So just to add on to Mrs. Frosto's form clear question, um, so the original grant is reduced to twenty-five thousand nine hundred and with the new grant, it's fifty-six one hundred with the total that came out to eighty-two thousand. That's where we got that eighty-two thousand from.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve the resolution.
Well, second.
All right, got a motion by Councilor Hart, second by Councilor Frosto to approve the resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute the development of climate element, task order number two zero two four dash zero two. Debate on this item. Hearing none, Councilor Ripley?
Yes.
Councilor Frosto? Councilor Hart?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Councilor Hancock?
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez?
Yes.
I two vote yes, motion passes. Thank you. Item D, wastewater emergency improvement project, task order number two zero two five dash three. Approve a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute the wastewater emergency improvement project, task order number two zero two five dash three, Mr. City Manager.
Again, I'll turn this over to Ms. Ray.
Ms. Ray?
Thank you again, everyone. Uh, so what you have in front of you is a task order for us to do design and construction administration services. And so if, uh, council recalls, uh, a few months ago, there was an emergency declared at the wastewater treatment plant for, um, uh, missing, uh, biogas piping. It had actually corroded in place. And so the wastewater treatment plant is, um, releasing unregulated methane. And so the, the declaration of emergency was to leverage funding, including emergency funding through the public works board. Uh, the city was successful in doing so. Uh, public works board offers, uh, the best, um, funding opportunity. It's five hundred thousand, fifty percent grant, so five hundred thousand dollar grant and a five hundred thousand dollar loan at a very reduced, uh, zero point eight six percent interest rate. So it's about the, the best that we could, um, anticipated. And so, um, this task order is then to help us design and administer construction services during the project. We do have some limitations in that, uh, public works board. In the essence of an emergency, wants to get this underway. So, uh, we have ninety days to begin our construction. So it's a very fast moving project to try to get that methane under control.
Comments for Ms. Ray?
Since we've heard about it, but it's something that we need to do for the health and safety of the community and, and our employees.
Yeah, and thank you for that. Um, so the project does have some rather long lead items, uh, the flare, for instance. So that's usually how a plant burns methane gas is through something called a flare. That flare has a thirty week lead time by the time we order it. So it, it is, um, uh, the, this isn't the type of work that you would just go down to, uh, say Ace Hardware to buy. There's, um, the flare, there's something called fire traps, there's condensate traps, all of those that we have to get that, those ordered as quickly as possible.
Hancock?
I have one. Uh, in the first whereas, the city of Sunnyside experienced an overflow of its W W T P digester sludge and discovered the sludge had entered the biogas piping. How did that happen? Why did it happen? And how do we prevent that from happening?
Yes, that's a perfect question. Uh, so not to get too, going too far down the technical terms, but, um, but it's needed to kind of brush the surface. So, um, the wastewater treatment plant off, uh, operates by something called a digester. And there are digester holding tanks out there. And so what had happened is the mixing system within that digester failed. And so that sludge got built up and went the only path it could, which was, uh, the biogas piping. So, uh, staff actually discovered, um, the overflow. And as they started investigating, trying to find the biogas piping, um, and, and keep in mind that when you're out there, everything looks very nice and shiny because it's all coated in the sheeting. But when they started pulling that sheeting off, they realized there is no pipe. So that's how, that, that, that's how that was discovered. And so since then, uh, staff has been able to, uh, limp along, lack of a better word, the actual mixing system within the digester. But that also needs an improvement, just, this is a little bit more critical.
And, and to prevent it in the future. What's, what's, what's the mechanism there?
Uh, so prevention in the future actually involves replacement of that mixing system within the digester tank.
Alarms, anything that can keep us from having that, those pipes, uh, once again deteriorate?
Yeah, so a couple of things there with, uh, the biogas piping, uh, the control panel will be outfit with more of like a SCADA system, which does send alarms to the operations building. And likewise, when that mixing system is replaced within the digester itself, uh, that will also have, uh, alarms available for city staff.
Right.
So both of those failed, just to, to council know.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
So the three hundred and five thousand dollars, it's coming out of the, the getting?
Yes, it's coming out of the project funding from the work sport.
Should it be, it, it's under a amount budgeted? We didn't have it budgeted for two thousand twenty-five, correct?
Uh, it was not budgeted, however, when you was meant to submit for the application, it would have been in that, um, application cost.
Yeah, seemed to remember seeing it there.
Other questions? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
To approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Hancock, second by Councilor Hart to approve a resolution authorizing this interim city manager to execute the wastewater emergency improvement project, task order number two zero two five dash three. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, Councilor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilor Hart?
Yes.
Councilor Frosto? Councilor Ripley?
Yes.
Councilor Hancock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
And I two vote yes, motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Ray. Item E, purchasing and procurement policy update. Approve a resolution adopting the revised purchasing and procurement policy. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, we discussed this, uh, item at the, uh, August fourth, uh, study session. Um, um, and at that time, when we presented it, we had, uh, uh, when we had looked at it as staff, we had only looked at the, the paragraph that dealt with the city manager's, um, purchasing authority. Um, uh, Deputy Mayor Galvane actually pointed out that there are several tables in the back that needed to be updated as well. So those updates have been clicked, uh, uh, completed. Essentially, um, uh, to wrap this all up, uh, the city manager has a sort of authority to, um, uh, spend up to ten thousand dollars, um, at, at a time. Um, but that item has to be budgeted. Uh, there has to be, uh, a, a follow-up report to city council at the next city council meeting. Um, and likewise with, uh, with, uh, directors, uh, department directors, they have, uh, reduced their spending authority as well. Um, but they have to, uh, report those expenditures, uh, at the next city council meeting, um, so that we can, uh, let the folks know how the money was spent. But again, all this money has to be budgeted, there has to be a budgeted item for it. Um, uh, it's just not, uh, as, uh, was, uh, brought up at the, um, public comments, um, to make sure that we're not, uh, uh, just saying, well, there's fifty thousand dollars in the budget. Let's go spend fifty thousand on something that may not, uh, be the right way to, to procure it, if you will. So I think a lot of the discrepancy that, that we're dealing with here too also deals with, uh, the term discretionary spending. This is not discretionary, so this, the discretion is, does the city manager or the department director, in this case, um, in both cases, um, is it an item that needs to be brought forward to city council immediately? Uh, or is it something that can be taken care of and then reported back, uh, you know, a week or two to the next city council meeting? So it's not discretionary spending, it's the discretion of the count, or the city manager or the department director to enter into the contract or spend the money. Uh, but then that money has to be reported at the following council meeting. So if that makes sense, I'll stand for questions.
Questions for the manager?
The one fly seen is, uh, on your cover letter that says amount of expenditure or amount budgeted and budget amendment zero. I think it should show a healthy savings for the city of Sunnyside is what I think it should show. I know it doesn't have to, but I think that'll save the city of Sunnyside quite a lot of money.
Further questions, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so Mr. City Manager, um, and, and I appreciate you guys going back and, and taking a look at these numbers here. But if you go, if you still go down there and under federal funds, projects, the way I'm reading is more than ten thousand dollars is still minimum competition and still city manager authority, that kind of contradicts, I guess, a little bit. So it still says, yeah.
Yeah, there are a lot of items, which, which item is that?
Uh, federal funds, projects.
At the very first top of page seven?
Yeah, and it's, uh, more than ten thousand because the rest of it was cost off.
That should, that should be ten thousand, the more than didn't get crossed out of that, but, um.
And, and another, another thing is that this, this, this document, um, it, it states some R C Ws, right? And I believe this document was last updated in two thousand twenty-three with the city of Sunnyside. But in July first of two thousand twenty-four, the state law changed for some of this and then there were some W A C changes. So I'm still a little bit concerned of these other changes that were, that were, that proposed here for some of these changes. Just want to make sure that we're not breaking any R C W or any, uh, W A C.
I mean, noted and if it's the desire of council, we can go back and take one more look at that and review the R C Ws and the W A Cs and, and clean that up.
Um, I was at a R C, uh, A W C training and if you look at the Lake Stevens, they were one of the first cities that updated it when the, when the R C Ws changed in July first of two thousand twenty-four. And they provide a pretty good, pretty, pretty good document. So that'd be a good one to take a look at.
Lake Stevens?
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, with, uh, go ahead.
Ms. Vasquez?
Yes, me too. I agree with Deputy Mayor. I would move to table this just because I still see a lot of errors even with punctuation and the wording. And I remember I brought up how, um, under section one, sit, under the part that says city manager, the first bullet, it just repeats a lot of wording and on the fifth bullet as well. So I, I think we should maybe table this and each council member bring things that need to be edited and things that should be removed and added on.
What I'd like to see is a probably.
Hancock?
More, thank you, is more let Jackie go in and remove all the strike throughs because it makes it very difficult to read. I think it'll be easier for her if she goes in and takes out the strike throughs and the amendments and, and we, I think we agree on the, on the ten thousand and the gist of this and then allow her to check the R C Ws and stuff, but to clean this up so it's an easier read for council.
Yes, and then on page seven, I'll just bring this up. Page seven, it contradicts itself because it says no more than ten thousand, but less than seventy-five thousand five hundred. So there's a lot of wording that needs to be removed still.
Okay, so basically what I'm hearing is council is in favor of this item. However, it needs to be cleaned up and clarified a little bit. We'd like to be able to read it without all the strike throughs so that we can read it in a more fluid mo- manner. So that it makes more sense to all of us, including to the public. But generally speaking, we're in favor of the idea, we're in favor of the numbers that we put in. Okay, I feel like we had a good discussion at our study session, I think it went well. And I do think this is on its way to becoming a very good document, but I think council is correct. Um, is there any objection to council to tabling this?
No objection.
No objection.
Okay, so let's table this until our next regular meeting. We'll allow the city manager and staff to, uh, clean it up a little bit and bring it back to us. I don't think it's a question of anything that we disagree on it, but we just want to, just clean a version of it. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right. Item eight, items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. This afternoon, the, uh, rules committee met and it is the rules committee that has been tasked with, um, going through applications for boards and commissions. Yeah, sorry. Um, anyway, we have had a couple that have had some vacancies that have been before us for some time. And we've had a couple of other things that felt like they were more pressing to, um, the committee when we met and so that we focused on those things a little bit more. But we did want to bring some names before council this evening for your consideration. And if there is no objection from council, we're going to move forward with those names. And the first one is for the housing authority board. And the name that rose to the top out of that group was, uh, Ms. Sierra Foster. Is there any objection to Ms. Sierra Foster being put on the housing authority board?
No objection.
She's fairly well involved in the city of Sunnyside. She's known throughout the city. I think she's got a pretty good standing in the community.
I have a question.
Yes.
Were there others who also applied for this position?
There were others, there were others that applied, then verbally said that they wanted to pull their application. Others did apply, um. This is the one that the committee felt was the one that we wanted to move forward.
Okay.
All right, so there's no objection to that one, so we will contact her. The last time I talked to her, she was very much in favor of that, but I didn't promise her anything. But that was, that was months ago, so we'll ask the clerk to reach out to her and move that forward. The next one, we had an application for Arts Commission. This was a Jesse Mendoza.
Bean, just one question back on that last one. Is Ms. Foster also on the LTAC committee?
She is.
Okay, so she's on two committees now, or two, a board and a committee?
Correct.
Okay.
But the Housing Authority Board has no affiliation with the city, it's just the
We appointed.
But they do not report to us.
Report to this, to the council.
It is a, you know, we did, I, it's a separate entity. All right, on the Arts Commission, Jesse Mendoza, is there any objection to Jesse Mendoza being placed on the Arts Commission? Got a lot of experience in different types of art, digital art, um, the, what would you call it, Ms. Fausto, the spray paint? Spray paint art?
Graffiti?
Yeah.
The graffiti style art, yeah.
Mur- mural art?
Murals, yes.
Application said they had over ten years of, um, painting, drawing.
So, I kind of like the resume. But there's no objection, okay, we'll move Jesse Mendoza forward as well. And then on the Planning Commission, we do have one member that we appointed but has not been sworn in. And that is Mr. Doug Shannon, so we are going to make an effort to get him sworn in. There is, I believe, a Planning Commission meeting tomorrow. And so the clerk said she is willing to swear him in before the meeting tomorrow so that he's able to attend if he's able to do that is.
Has he been notified?
Not yet. So hopefully he's able to do that. Um, we made that decision this afternoon, so we haven't had a chance to, to reach out to him. But if the clerk is able to get ahold of him and swear him in, then he will be able to attend the meeting and vote. Otherwise, I think he can be at the meeting but can't vote.
Oh, has he been attending meetings and, and had? Why wasn't, I don't understand why he wasn't sworn in because he was
He wasn't able to be there that day. And so hasn't
Hasn't been apparent?
Somehow the contact hasn't been made for him to be here for a meeting so he could be sworn in.
Well, we've had a lot of, uh, emails and, and, um, blowback from the community because we haven't had quorums for this, for the Planning Commission. Why, why didn't we address this sooner?
Like I said, the, uh, Rules Committee has not met to talk specifically about applications. We had other things that were before us, and we prioritize those, so we want to correct that. And if we can get Mr. Shannon sworn in and can be able to participate in the meetings, then we can get back to where we have a quorum.
Uh, I, as, as council member, I'd appreciate, you know, um, maybe some information like that, go out to council that all of council can prioritize what's, what, I mean, it's all of council decision on stuff like Planning Commission, we have to consent. And we're getting, um, blowback from community members that are very upset with us. I wish I would have known this. So I, I, I'd like a little more information coming back to us from the
Well, Council, Mr. Shannon was appointed by the Rules Committee a year ago.
Right, and he's not sworn in to date?
That's correct.
That that, uh, yeah, I just, I don't understand, I'm sorry, but we, we can discuss that later.
At any rate, Ms. Renteria will attempt to contact him, and if she is able to get that done before the meeting, he will be able to attend. All right, and we were notified that we are obligated to fill the one vacancy that we still have for the, um, Climate Commission. And so we have one name, and so we will, again, try to find a time when we can meet soon for discussion on that. I'd like to discuss our applicant a little more in detail with the committee before we bring that one forward to council. But we will try to have that ready to go for the next regular meeting.
Uh, yeah, and I would like you to keep in mind that, you know, yes, getting somebody from the community is good, but we've already filled seats that aren't from the community, so let's get them filled.
Thank you, Councilor, yeah, taken into account. All right, next item, council request status report. There we are. All right, first item there is our dog breeding ordinance. Do we have an update on our dog breeding ordinance?
Yes, we do. Have many paperwork here. So I have sent this to our, with the, thank you from Mr., uh, Deputy Mayor Galván, that sent me this, uh, ordinance. I did send it out to our attorney, and he, he did look it over. There are some comments on here, um, that I'll be looking up into and getting a better clarification, but I am working forward getting this, uh, taken care of. Also, um, reaching out to, uh, people for, obviously trying to get the Kenaway, uh, dog breed also, trying to get that taken care of so we can move forward with that. So we can get an ACO and, uh, get going on our dog, dog problem that's out there. I've seen many dogs out there, and I know people have, are concerned of them. Um, obviously, animal lovers, and I'm also an animal lover, so I, I know it's been pretty hot. And, um, we all really want to make sure that these animals have a place to go and not, obviously, not also be a nuisance, but also be able to be, get loved. So I, that is being worked on, and, um, I will send, uh, this back to Deputy Mayor Galván so he can look it over and to the council, so they can all, uh, give their input, and, uh, we can move forward with this ordinance.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, the next item is our Yellowstone Trail.
Yes, so I have reached out to H L A, uh, Principal Eric, uh, I, I'm gonna mess up his name, I'm not, I'm not gonna lie, Hornzog, I'm not sure if I'm saying that right. Forgive me, Eric, if you're watching. Um, so I have researched, he, we did research the public records, and he did not find anywhere that city conveyed that they vacated the right of way to the Justin property owners. Um, he's also stated that I'm not sure what the process would be to repeal the ordinance. Um, it may be required at a public noticing and hearing. Um, I will be reaching out to our city attorney with this, um, so we can get better clarification and, uh, move forward with it. If, uh, council would like me to go in that direction.
Well, I think we want to make sure that we're covering our bases. If we've already surplus it, then, then we need to know that. If there's no evidence that we've surplus it, then do we have an a statement from council saying that it's surplus and then no action was taken on it afterwards by staff or what? We need to figure that one out so that we're not
We have an ordinance that surpluses it. It just was not transferred to the property owner, so it is surplus, so that would take an ordinance change.
Okay.
So, um, I will send the ordinance that I received and, uh, let our attorneys take a look at it, and then we can proceed with what we need to do. I've also, uh, reached out to the Yellowstone Trail on, obviously, on behalf of Ms. Hart and trying to get a sign going. I did email them, um, have not heard anything back to, as of today. Um, but soon as they will, I will always notify the council with the, their, I asked for a quote, so, uh, and the picture of what the trail sign would be.
And Mr. Mayhem, this is probably not your department, but yeah, I, I know you went out there to clean up. It, there, there's more cleanup that needs to be done, and especially that lot right there. And that's code enforcement, I'm sure, but, um, city, Mr. City Manager, would you see that code enforcement takes care of that because it is an ISO and?
Yes.
Of course, uh, Mr. Taylor and I have been working together also with the code enforcement, uh, to make sure with our ordinance, get everything situated for that, so, um, I'll make sure to pass it on to Mr. Taylor also.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on there, you could scroll down just a little, a little bit there. Things, uh, temporary vendors without permits.
So, yes, uh, obviously, see, that is something Mr. Taylor and I have been working on. Obviously, I, like I discussed, uh, on the last meeting, um, we are working on trying to get that ordinance in place, so it's condensed all in one. So we are allowed to let our code enforcement, obviously, take the information to educate the people that are out there. Um, two weeks ago, like, like I stated to Mr. Taylor is that I stopped by, saw vendor, tried to educate them. Um, obviously, to follow up with that is very hard because I can't just ask for information from them. Um, I can look for their pink, um, cart with their ice cream, but, you know, that would take more time out of my day than I really don't have. So, um, Mr. Taylor and I are working diligently over it and trying to get everything condensed. Obviously, trying to, throughout our day, I know our hours are sporadically getting used, but, um, we are working on it. Um, and between him and I, and hopefully the code enforcement, uh, we will be coming in on weekends, um, with the approval of the city man, interim city manager and flexing our time, so we can make sure we get it, stay on top of that.
All right, thank you, sir. Wait for her to finish typing so she can scroll. All right, farm implement machinery. Whose is that one? Mr. City Manager?
I'm the one that, um, brought it up.
Oh, no, he skipped over that one, I'm sorry. Fire hydrants, parking lines, a different order here then.
Yeah.
All right, so fire hydrant.
I've had the yellow paint, still waiting for my email.
I actually issued you an email about a week ago.
You did?
Yes, I forwarded you everything I had sent to CUS, Arteaga, and it has all the photos included.
I have not received it, but I guess I will look through the junk mail.
Yes.
And see there.
I sent
Okay, I'll look through it, I, I did not see anything in my emails, um, but I'll look in my junk mail and obviously, and, uh, I will get those going. Obviously, the fire hydrants getting painted up. I do have the yellow paint still, it's ready to go. I did send, uh, a thank you. And so we are gonna be posting it on our website for standard paint, so with the thank you saying, you know, we appreciate the, uh, three buckets of five gallon paint for the graffiti and also the five gallon bucket that I was given for the curbs and obviously for hydrants. So we will be, I will, we'll be working on that one.
Perfect, thank you so much.
If I cannot find it, I'll shoot you an email. If you can please resend it, uh, that would be great. That way I can make sure I get everything taken care of.
Sounds good.
All right, and then what's the last one? Farm implement machinery.
This one that says fireworks. Where's that at?
All over town.
Uh, farm implement machinery, that's along Yakima Valley Highway.
No, I know where they are, and where is it on the report?
The last one, I, line nine.
That's what I have here on the last one is
I don't think Let me see if I can zoom in, sorry.
No, ours wasn't updated.
Didn't have that one on it.
I have not yet, uh, had a chance to meet with Mr. Sleeve on this, um, so gimme
I, I don't think it's a, a
Right.
Uh, urgent thing, it's just that he contacted me and, and we do have to keep it in mind and, and work towards what we're gonna do with the farm implement equipment.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I remember correctly, earlier in the year, um, Mr. Gonzalez did bring this to us as an urgent matter, and I don't know if he ever followed up with, uh, Greg, so
so there has to be some communication there, yeah.
Yeah, it did, it did come before us at one time, I do remember that, and, um,
He's working on it.
Mr. Gonzalez did want some direction on that, so.
I think, Mr. Mayor. I think, but one of the things we were, at that, at that point, we were talking about having signage out there. Why those, why those old dead tractors were sitting along the side of the road out there. We were supposed to be putting up some signage, and I believe some signage has been put up there. Um, of course, the only way you can see it is if you're actually walking down the pathway, because that's where it's facing. It's not facing out to the public, you know, driving by. Um, and I think there was some discussion also about maybe having, um, uh, some way to light those, um, implements that are along there. It seems like we talked about that, and that was something he was looking into. Um, but like, those are the two things that I remember.
Right, and there was also a cluster of equipment there located on Yakima Valley Highway near Sixteenth.
Yeah, that we were trying to spread out.
Move to a different location perhaps, Mr. Ripley.
Yeah.
I remember him talking about insurance.
That was another item that was of concern.
Oh, heck, yeah, yeah.
And, and who was talking about the insurance? That's Mr. Sleeve or Mr. Gonzalez?
There were some
We, we had some
pieces out there from Mr. Sleeve, and so they were talking about insurance.
And, well, I think too, it was the attractive nuisance thing that somebody would get hurt on the equipment.
Yes, because we were having people, excuse me, we were having people wanting to, some of our homeless people were taking advantage of the more covered vehicles that are out there, so that was part of the reason for the insurance. I think that was one of the reasons we talked about it.
Or kids climbing on it.
Or kids climbing on it, yeah, exactly.
So there was discussion on it, it's just hadn't moved any further, but yeah, it's something that needs to be continued. All right, are there any items that needed to be added to the council request report? Ms. Vasquez?
Yeah, I'd like to add something. I've actually brought this up about a while ago, but I want to bring it back up. So on North Sixth Street, heading your way down to Yakima Valley Highway, right in the middle of auto, Valley Auto Parts and Ace, coming up to Morano's Auto Sales. We have diagonal, diagonal parking, and it's already been fading away. And every time I drive down that road, there's cars all lined up on top of the parking. So no one is paying attention to it because the, the way to turn right is lined up right there, so I, I don't know if we have white paint, uh, maybe this could go hand in hand with that. But just removing those diagonal parkings and maybe switching it to, if we do want parking, we can, but maybe switch it to something where cars would be parallel parking in and out.
Jim, am I right in that those lines are like extremely long?
They were, they're very
I mean, I think that that's the problem is they're not for a normal car, it would be like bus parking there. And so I'm thinking if they shortened those up, that would be
But, am I
No, but, but farm implement parade or something.
It seems to me that when we talked about those, those lines before, because this has come up before, we talked about waiting until they faded because uh, to just go out there and, and take the pe, take the paint off was gonna be pretty costly. And we were waiting to have the, the actual, um, uh, stripes, the, the diagonal stripes, um, fading out, as I recall, the, the earlier, earlier in the year, there was discussion, or maybe it was even last year. But I think what the other thing in, and, and we might want to go ahead and mark that as parallel parking along there. I think the reason that those were longer happened to be because of big pickups that like to park along there, but it really, it really is dangerous. Because, but I don't know that very many people park there because they don't want to get their cars wrecked, yeah, yeah.
So from the multiple times that I've driven down that road, I've never once seen a car parked there.
Yeah.
And even if, you know, they're long and, Councilor Hancock just said maybe it's too short in it. I don't think that would be a solution as well. I think we really need to change the way
They need to be changed.
Parking on, in that area.
And we, we, uh, we have the machine that we can, uh, grind them out, so we can get the grinder out there and grind them out, and it not gonna cost us any more or any less, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I guess before we start, start removing lines?
They're Stephanie.
Requirement that it has to be, um, that sort of parking for
Yes, and I will look into that too, the old design of the Sixteenth, uh,
So Ms. Ray is wanting to say something here, so let's, she might have something to, uh, offer here.
Thank you, everybody. So we were the designer for that project, and we did a pretty robust public engagement process. And every business along there was concerned about losing parking. And so that's why two diagonal stalls went in there at that exact location is because there was a complaint from a business owner. I do agree with you, uh, that, um, they, they do stick out there, but let me tell you the reason for that, so um, eh, when you're driving down Sixth Street, you'll notice that roadway is actually really pretty wide. And so those paint stripes were intended to try to push everybody toward the center line to maintain an alignment. What we don't want to see happen is, um, kind of have this wide seat of asphalt, and then you have folks that are kind of over here and kind of over here. So we're trying to channel, um, you know, that, that traffic flow. It is to, it's supposed to be a single lane, um, traffic flow through there. Uh, we did, um, look into parallel parking, uh, and it looked like we could do one stall, so par- typical parallel parking is, uh, twenty feet wide. Um, and we do have to be a little careful because there's a driveway entrance in there. And so that can certainly be accommodated. It was an option for, um, some of those businesses to consider. And in the end, they went with that diagonal parking. So that's the wise and workforce of where we got to where we're at, um, would strongly encourage, um, uh, you, you can let the, 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 that white line fade, or you can paint it over in black, but, um, any actual removal with the grinder will actually invalidate your warranty, so hold off on doing that because, um, the project's still under warranty.
Okay.
That's helpful to know, thank you.
We'd like to use up the warranty before we get all carried away, I think.
It does bring up another question though, is we have a lot of parking spots that need to be repainted. Because um, I park over at the bank across from City Hall and it was parallel parking, except now you can see the old angle parking lines. And people are starting to angle park in there again. And so they need to be refreshed.
I, I will get the street department on them uh, soon as we get back to painting.
And I know, I know the line painting is coming up shortly and, you know, at the beginning of the school year, you're, you're always there doing that. But yeah, we're getting to where some of those parking lines need to be redone pretty desperately.
Well, I'll take a drive around and find some and make sure we will be able to paint those, so.
Okay, other items that need to be added to the uh, council request. All right, well, if you think of anything, you may speak to the manager, the clerk. Other reports, announcements, and/or questions by council. And we'll start with Council Hancock.
Um, I just wanna thank the um, the powers that be, the fire department, police department, everybody that participated in the National Night Out. Was a great success and a lot of people comment on it. I saw a lot of posts on Facebook and, and um, I just want to say thank you. I think the community really appreciated it, so.
All right, Council Vasquez.
Yeah, so I'll start with the question. So I know we were just talking about um, these positions that are available right now that are up and vacant currently, and you guys are choosing who gets on what board, housing authority, arts commission, and so on. So my question is, I know that the Rules Committee is in charge of choosing, viewing who all is applying. And as a council member, could I also get that information? Okay, so that's my question.
It's not secret from council. It's just that the Rules Committee meets, we discuss different ins and outs, different characteristics and, and makes a, a basic choice, but it's always approved by council.
Okay, so yeah, I would appreciate just more information, who, what candidates are applying and interested in these positions.
Can we direct Jackie as those positions, uh, those applications come in? Can all of council receive those?
Kind of was under the impression that we did get them, but maybe I'm dreaming.
Well, and I don't know, and some of them have come in from some, some time ago. So you, you may have, it's just been a while.
Right now, it's only the Rules Subcommittee that receives a copy automatically, but if, if the council's direction is to receive, I can.
I, I would, I would appreciate that, uh, Karen.
Yeah, because I don't, I feel like I'm also just knowing here in these meetings, so I'd like some insight before.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I too, um, I would, I would just want to say thank you to the Police Department, Police Foundation, and everyone who contributed to this um, current National Night Out. It was a really, really great success all around. I heard that there were good, good turnouts even in different parks and community areas and um, community members stepping up in the A-hole area. It was just really nice that they're baking cookies and blowing up balloons and just a huge thank you to everyone who gave out of their pocket, everyone who donated. Big shout out to all the businesses, all the local businesses who stepped up and also contributed. Um, it shows, it shows that Sunnyside really cares and steps up when, when it's needed. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Council Ripley.
Okay, on uh, July twenty fifth, uh, there was a um, somebody got ahold of me. There, it was, there was a birthday party at the pool and I guess there weren't lifeguards. At times, there weren't any lifeguards in the seats. And um, then a lot of the lifeguards were inside and um, there is a manager there watching all the kids, right? You know, even at birthday parties, you know, I know there is during pool time.
Yes, ma'am. There should be either an assistant manager or a manager there. But I was not notified of that, um, or Ms. Gonzalez who's been running the lifeguards.
I was sent pictures of
Okay.
empty lifeguard.
I, I can really look into that tomorrow and see where the miscommunication or who, who was not on their seats when they were supposed to be.
Okay.
So if you can send me that information, that'd be great. And then um, Ms. Gonzalez and I can uh, really look into it.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Council Prostow.
Nothing to report.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so I was at the AWC budget training this past week and, and let me tell you that we're far behind on, on a lot of stuff that uh, Sunnyside does. A lot of policies that need to be updated, um, mainly the budget pol- policies. So I'd like to have the um, Finance Subcommittee meet up maybe this week or next, so we could start discussing those policies. Um, Lake Stevens is, is probably one of the ones that I was very impressed. Uh, the mayor is, is right on top of things and um, he's, he's doing it, you know, the right way. And, and making sure that these policies are in place and they are being followed, so. Um, I have a bunch of notes, uh, I'll go, I'll go through them and I'll share the, the, the slides, the PowerPoint slides with, with the rest of council. So it's something that really interested, interesting to, for you guys to check out as well, so I'll be sending those over.
I'd really appreciate that, George. And I know that some of their other training is on budgets is available online. And I attended that a, a few years ago and that was one of the best trainings for AWC I've ever been at.
Deputy Mayor, would you mind also sending that to the finance staff so that I can share it with everyone in the finance department?
Yeah, I could send it to you that way. I don't miss anybody.
Thank you, yeah.
Yes, I also attended that and I actually took a lot of notes. Um, the last day, um, they made us do a budget training exercise where they gave us a lot of numbers and we had to budget it and figure it out for ourselves. Um, because this, this fake city was in a huge deficit, so it was pretty interesting. So I'll share some of my notes as well.
All right, no, we'll look forward to hearing from that, about that from you guys, so. All right, anymore?
That's it.
Council Hart.
Nothing to report.
All right, well, I want to echo my colleagues on the National Night Out. I think our police department did an amazing job with the uh, getting out there with the information. And I made it to four of the different events. My goal was to be, you know, about fifteen minutes at each one and maybe get to maybe even more than four. But um, when you're the mayor, you get pigeonholed and cornered and you find out what people are unhappy about and you find out what people are incredibly happy about. So um, it took me a lot longer to get out of there than I originally intended. But they were well attended and they were well done and the community really stepped up. And I was really proud of our community in that. I think um, as, as our colleagues, my colleagues have said here, it was, it was a wonderful event. So well done, everyone. The Rules Committee did meet today as we've mentioned, and we did discuss a couple of other things as well. Council, you can look forward to seeing some rough drafts of um, code of conduct changes and updates as well as continued updates and improvement to the uh, rules of procedure. So you look forward to that in your email be coming up and we want to work on that at the next um, study session, beginning of September. And so we will solicit your feedback. Please do not reply all in your feedback. Um, Mr. Galvan has done much of the work on that. And so I'm gonna ask that you respond to Mr. Galvan, the deputy mayor, in all of that, so that he can take that into account. Because he has done so much work on that already and I appreciate that. I tell you, he's got, he's got a knack for that stuff. And I think council is very lucky to have him on board, so.
Dean, I think we still get in trouble if we all respond to Mr. Galvan.
You can do it. You can do it singularly.
Yeah, you don't, you don't hit reply, you don't hit reply all.
Just, just.
And if I correct, and Julie, correct me if I'm wrong there, if you're still on.
Still on, but what was the question?
So if um, we get sent, uh, we have, let's say, for example, we had the de- the manager or the clerk send out the proposed revisions to our code of conduct or rules of procedure. And if council members reply individually to the deputy mayor, who is the author of a lot of those changes, is there any issues or concerns that we have as far as a rolling meeting?
As long as he just corresponds individually and just accepts all the comment and doesn't transfer it out until you're in an open public session, um, that should be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I reply individually.
All right, that's how I understood that as well, but wanted to make sure that we're not crossing any lines here. So thank you for your input on that. But yes, council, councils, you can look forward to uh, to seeing some of that. We've got some changes that um, pertain to social media, harassment, discrimination, retaliation, um, some considerations for um, future public meetings. Um, the idea is out there to maybe um, offer two public comment sections. Uh, one at towards the beginning of the meeting and one towards the end, so that people, if they like or dislike something that we've done or want to have some feedback at the end of the meeting, they can certainly do that. And then um, some of the rules as far as council members on Zoom meetings and also as we request information for agendas and for other information requests and how we handle that and how staff handles that. So clarify that. So look forward to that and we'll look forward to hearing your input at the next study session and make some progress on that. And that's all I have. Upcoming council meetings. Adam City Clerk.
We don't have anything other than the, I've moved the purchasing and procurement policy to the next meeting, but there's nothing on the schedule yet. I'm sure the budget dates will start populating once we receive them from the finance department.
Right. Anything needs to be added to the agenda, council, please make sure that is added at least the Monday before the meeting, so that that can be properly processed and prepared for. All right, next item on our agenda is a, is an executive session. Initially asking for thirty minutes. Executive session consists of the following. RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body or a member acting in official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. As well as RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one four zero four B. That portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning on adopting or adopting the strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations or grievance or mediation proceedings or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings while in progress. And then also, we're gonna, this is what we added tonight, subsection C, to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price, however final action. Selling or leasing public property shall be taken in any meeting open to the public. Um, action is expected and we're asking for thirty minutes initially.
Mr. Main?
Yes.
We didn't do um, department heads.
And you know what? Reason for that? It was, I'm getting there. I have upcoming council meetings and then executive session, because it wasn't on my agenda.
Oh, it is. It's eight and then number nine.
Sure it is, way down at the bottom. I really goofed.
Looks like a footer.
I was getting ahead of myself. Okay. Then, remember what I read. We're gonna do staff reports first. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Um, we, well, we recently filled uh, three positions at City Hall. Um, we have a, a new finance supervisor. We have a new IT uh, staff member and we also have a new HR generalist. And so uh, you know, those positions were budgeted. Uh, the city actually used uh, uh, an outside agency to recruit those positions. And uh, I, I, I don't have, you know, the, the name of the company was Astro Hire, I believe. Uh, and we're uh, still waiting to get the, the cost of that recruitment uh, to us. Uh, and then um, uh, so just if you're in City Hall, um, swing by, introduce yourself, you know, to the new, new staff. Uh, we are uh, getting ready to actually re- recruit some more staff that uh, open positions that need to be uh, filled uh, in our water wastewater positions. Um, also looking at the deputy city clerk's position. So uh, that's what I have. So I'll turn it over to Chief Layman.
Okay, um, Saturday, I was able to attend a police explorer graduation at the Akma Training Center. They have two um, academies a year, one in the summer and one in, in winter. And the Akma Training Center is pretty gracious with the, allowing them to use their facilities and everything like that. So I was able to go attend their uh, graduation and congratulate them on their uh, week of uh, learning about being a police officer. So um, just before I came here, there was a small um, leak of some, some sort over at Dairy Gold. I don't have all the details of fire department was dealing with it. I was there in case we had to evacuate anybody. We didn't have to. They were starting to wrap up when I left. While I was there, we had a DUI crash at uh, Yakima Valley Highway in Lincoln. Sound like there was multiple cars involved. I didn't, I don't have a ton of details. I just asked them as I walked through the patrol area to come to this meeting, so. Um, National Night Out, my plan is to expand it as we go forward. So this year, we had ten parties. Um, next year, I'd hope to get to fifteen and maybe the year after twenty. That's about where we were ten, fifteen years ago. Um, so uh, I wanted a big shout out to the Police Foundation. They pulled it up two thousand dollars to pay for anything that needed to be covered. Um, Washington Beef completely donated two thousand hot dogs and then Walmart stepped up and uh, give us price breaks on everything and then, and then got our uh, all the hot dog buns donated. So um, a couple of businesses that stepped up big, so that's what I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, so as the city manager was saying, we do have positions open. Uh, we just closed off one today for the two positions that are for the Parks Department. Uh, we have one open for, a position open for wastewater treatment plant operator that will be closed on Friday. Uh, we have many in-house applications, uh, resumes that came in towards me and HR. Um, as of right now, we have uh, two, three applications for the wastewater treatment plant operator. Um, those positions that are uh, obviously union and uh, we hope to fill within uh, this month. Also, um, I have worked on the breakdown that Ms. Hancock had stated uh, last time about how much our water meters are costing. Um, I have copies for you guys I can hand out uh, here in a little bit later. There are prices that the, the supervisor in the water department gave me. Um, and they, he actually did really, really well on updating me on prices of every meter we have out there. Um, I've also have been working on also the fees. As of right now, the fees that we have on our website is not the current fees. Um, I did some digging and found uh, that they've been changed, modified four times and out of all those four times, not everything got put back in. Um, so I am working on those to hopefully get those cleaned up. And I hope to have it cleaned up and put into play and given to you guys. So you guys can uh, look it over and make sure I don't miss anything. Um, and then we can update our uh, website with the current fees that we have. And then obviously, if there's any suggestions or, you know, changes that you guys would like, um, obviously we can uh, take care of that. And obviously I'll send, uh, want to meet, Cory and I want to meet with the Public Works uh, committee also again to see in which direction and um, how we can uh, move on with the ordinance also. So um, I know our street department right now is working on uh, Bonneville uh, Road and the A-hole Estates. Uh, they've worked very hard out there putting a drain pipe in to our storm drains out there. Obviously, the groundwater is very high there. Uh, so the road was very deteriorated. So kudo to them. They did an awesome job. And they're doing an awesome job out there. They uh, asphalted today. Um, and I believe they'll be asphalting tomorrow. So kudo to them. They uh, they've been working very hard out there, so.
Thank you for catching those fee details and please keep us updated with, once you do update everything.
Yes, most definitely. It's, it's a lot, but uh, my eyes are, are getting cross-eyed, but I will make sure they, they get uncross-eyed for all these fees. And then we can get a, a, a good fees out there.
Well, good catch.
Thank you.
Council Ripley.
Do we have a job posting for a public works director?
I don't think it's actually posted. I, I, I know that we need to open it up and recruit one, so um, um, so that answers your question. That is a position that needs to be filled.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a item to note to add a little more information on what Jim brought up about the um, new positions that we have at City Hall. Of course, it's great to see new faces and feel like we're actually making progress with getting um, positions filled. But the um, finance department itself does still have three full-time positions that are not filled. So we do have a little ways farther to go.
Kelly, can you tell us um, how you filled those positions and uh, yeah, just go ahead and tell us how you filled those positions.
The finance positions that are open and our process that we go through for that. So
And about Astro Hire, if you would.
So currently, the finance positions that we have open, um, because of the union, we're not we're not able to move forward with filling those positions until the person that's been on leave for the last sixty days actually decides if they'll be returning or if they will not be returning. So we're kind of on a old pattern with those until that person does make a definitive statement if they are coming back to work or they are not. We're hoping that we'll have that answer by August the twenty-third.
So can you tell me about uh the Astro Hire, the the Astro Hire?
So Astro Hire is a company that focuses on recruitment for governmental agencies and also for um municipalities. They're uh have a lot of experience in the areas of Washington, Oregon, and do a lot of governmental specific work is one of the reasons that I really felt like they knew the difference between governmental and commercial. Sometimes it's really hard, especially in different positions like finance. People that have only had commercial experience don't realize all of the additional regulations or requirements that we have as a governmental agency. And so he's able to really hash out the knowledge that they have about an actual government specialty.
And what were the fees for Astro Hire?
So the fees depended on the amount of the starting wage for the person that we hired.
And what would that be?
You know, I I'm not privy to the fee, the amount that those positions were hired for at this time. That'd be a HR question.
Oh, you don't know what your your, the people in finance are getting paid?
I don't know what that position was actually hired at. That would be a question that I could ask of HR.
Were these fees budgeted?
Um they are within the budget. Those, none of those positions have been filled for well over six months. So there is money under the wages area that is not gonna be spent by the time we get to the end of the year.
Uh yeah, but but were the were the fees from the company, were the fees from the company budgeted?
There is money in professional services, which is where the line item that that will come out of.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hart, you had a question?
Yeah, my question was that this money was already budgeted in the twenty-five budget. Is that not correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
For, and that is also true for many of the other um positions that are open. Those were already in the budget.
Yes.
From last year.
That is correct.
So these are not, these are not new monies that we're bringing in.
And they're not new positions. They're positions that have remained unfilled for quite some time.
As you said, six months for some of them?
Or longer.
Or longer. Okay, thank you. I just wanted that for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Koski.
So in IT, we're just uh working to get staff uh up to date, um get them up to speed so that we can, you know, tackle some of these projects coming on. Um we got work with the phone system. We got uh our Microsoft licensing that needs to be looked over. And um right now, uh uh we finally got a department that can help me out with some of this stuff. But before we can tackle some of these things, we gotta get them up to speed. So it's gonna slow me down a bit before it helps me, but I am glad to have a team now.
Well, I'm happy to have them on board. They got my computer issue solved very quickly and efficiently and I don't know that they had to draw you into it, so that saved you a little time there, so. And it's nice to turn on my computer and have something other than a black screen, so it's been. All right.
Mister Mayor, one one question. I just wanna apologize for overspeaking, uh Ms. Hancock. I didn't mean to to overspeak you. I just, sometimes I thought if I don't write it down quick enough, I I lose it. So thank you. Hope you understand I didn't mean to be um, uh what do you call it? I was just overspeaking. I'm sorry.
Thank you, councillor. All right, Adam City Clerk.
Um just working on record requests and cleaning up some things like agreements and things like that. Just waiting for, we're gonna start hiring, looking into hiring the deputy city clerk. I kind of wanted to wait until things were a little bit settled down, but I I do need the help, so we're just gonna push through, so. Yeah.
Okay. And if anybody has seen Jackie during the day, you know that she is constantly busy and assistance for her would be a godsend, I think, so. All right, Mr. City Manager, anything else? That's all? All right, now, go back and remember what I read about the executive session. We got three RCWs that are affected. We are expecting action and we want thirty minutes. So we'll give the audience an opportunity to step out, those who are necessary to be here. Um you may remain, of course. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight.
Dean, reminder to take their personal belongings.
Yes, if you are going to step out and come back in later on, please take your personal belongings, computers, cameras, recording devices, whatever.
Water jugs.
Water jugs.
Do you have some documents that you want?